WDEB News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equus and Leader, Member FDIC.
This Fintress County Board of Commission is called to order. Please rise for the presentation of color by the Clark Range J.R.O.T.C. Color Guard, followed by the pledge to the flag by Second District Commissioner Kim Davidson, and opening prayer by Fourth District Commissioner Jeff Green.
Forward, march. Color Guard, halt. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Colors diverse, march. Forward, march. Color Guard, halt. Order, colors. Order, march. Fall out.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we come to you this evening and Father, first, I want to thank you for the opportunity to, you've given us to serve the county, Father, and pray that what we do here tonight would be done in a manner which would be pleasing unto you, that it be the wishes of the people of the county. And Father, we also want to thank the young people that have come out and with a color guard, Father, and have done such a tremendous job representing our country for the past years, Father, and ask your blessings on them and their futures. And again, Father, we ask that what we do here tonight would be done in a manner be pleasing unto you. We ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. We'll have roll call vote by Maryland Stevens, our county court clerk.
Here.
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 Jeff Green.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Here.
White Matthews.
Eight present, two absent, so we do have a quorum. Next thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our April the 16th, 2018 County Commission meeting. Does everybody have a chance to look over those? Any additions, subtractions, corrections?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Thanks.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
JP.
Four.
Cam.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is approval of notary applications. We have Regina Threet, Angela De York, Ernest Vincent Sosa Jr., Regina Stowers, and Lavanna Smith.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
JP.
Four.
Cam.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is, we have WDEB Radio's presentation of a memorial plaque to the family of Gary Crockett. And could we get all of Gary's family to come up, please? This county lost one of our true treasures, true friends, Mr. Gary Crockett, so we've got a couple things tonight that we're going to do. Kev?
How do you need us?
Hello. Let's see. Here across the front of the table, they asked me to say.
They can come up here. Yeah, step on my car, that's why you've got plenty of room.
Wind yourself up.
Wind you up, John. You're going to have a mug shot anyway.
I can't see you, Kevin, but go ahead.
If it's okay, I'd like to share just a moment or two. I will, I promise you, I will not take very long. But what I want to share, it's so hard, how do you get 47 years on a plaque? Gary Crockett was with WDEB Radio and served this community for 47 years. That's miraculous in itself. You can't get someone to stay with you 47 days, much less 47 years in this day and time. He was dedicated to this county and served the county for 47 years. Now, during that 47 years, people depended on him. Business people depended on him, contractors, builders, people that were laying concrete, pouring concrete depended on him. They would call him every morning, what's the weather going to be like? Is it going to rain? Do I have enough time to pour the concrete? Will it get dry? I've got to get the roof in the dry, I mean, what's it like? 47 years, business people depended on him. 47 years, school students have depended on him. They've done research papers on weather. Gary Crockett kept the weather records for 47 years for WDEB, but not just for WDEB, but for the National Weather Service. We are the official reporting station for the National Weather Service. He was online with them almost every day for 47 years. It started out as phone calls to the National Weather Service, then they went to the computer system and Gary Crockett kept accurate weather records that we still have today for the past 47 years. He not only served this community in that capacity, he woke us all up in the morning. I shared this earlier, when several people mentioned this, that their alarm clocks failed them, they would just turn the radio on before they went to bed at night, and the next morning, Gary Crockett and the rooster would wake them up. And he not only served the community for 47 years, he served this community as a firefighter. Many of you may not know that, for 17 years, a volunteer fireman. He served his church as a deacon, and the very definition of a deacon is one who serves. He served his family. And when he got all his grandchildren, Gary was the one that picked them up from school. Gary was the one that, you know, did so many things with them. And Gary was just a servant, and if you had to describe Gary in one word, it would be servant. He served his wife, he served his family, and he served his God. He was an outstanding Christian man. I'm telling you, I've often told about my dad, I never heard my dad say one cuss word or never cheat anybody or lie to anybody. I can say the very same thing about Gary Crockett. Not knowingly, he would not lie to you, he would not cheat you, never heard a bad word come out of his mouth. He was just an amazing guy. So, we wanted to do something special for him. This plaque that we want to present to the family says, "Given in honor of Gary Edward Crockett for 47 years of faithful service to WDEB Radio and this community, dependable, faithful friend, and man of God." And I think the county has put it on their proclamation, I think the thing that best describes Gary Crockett and his service, John Douglas always said to me several months ago, he said, you know, when I went away to school, he said, man, I'd be so homesick and I'd be coming home, and he said, I'd get in and I'd, so many miles out, I'd flip on the radio and I'd hear Gary's voice, and he said, it's the voice of home. He said, I knew I was getting close to home. So, we'd like to present this to the family. One other thing about this plaque, in the upper left corner, there's a picture of a microphone. That's not just any microphone. 47 years ago, one of the first microphones WDEB bought was a Shure 55S. That was the microphone to have back then. When my dad took over the radio station 46 years ago, Gary was there a year longer than my dad. That microphone was the first microphone we had, it was in the studio when Dad took over. This is a picture of the 55S Shure microphone. That microphone is still on display, we've mounted it and put it on the wall at the radio station so you can stop by and see it. And of course, in the bottom right corner, I cannot say that this is the actual rooster that crowed, or a picture of the rooster that crowed that Gary used every morning, but it is a rooster that Gary was known by, that rooster crow early in the morning. Family, we love you. I'm telling you, he was a dandy.
Thank you, Kevin, and if the family would remain there, we have a presentation, a proclamation to the family of Gary Crockett to honor and memorialize Gary's dedication to the citizens of Fintress County. I'll come down and present that, and we'd like to get every commissioner up there in the picture as well.
Proclamation in memoriam of Gary Edward Crockett, the voice of home. Whereas Gary Crockett was born September 17th, 1952, and was the fourth son of William O'Neill and Gladys Crockett. And whereas Gary was a lifelong resident at Fintress County and married Brenda on May 26th, 1978. And whereas, together, they raised two daughters, Rebecca and Regina, who blessed them with six grandchildren, Isaac, Ruthie, Ella Kate, Harper, Lane, and Shade. And whereas Gary was a charter member of the Unity Baptist Church when it began in 1981, where he was an ordained deacon for 35 years and faithfully served his church and community. And whereas, during Gary's dedicated service to Unity Baptist Church, he was a choir member for 35 years and the congressional hymn leader for 30 years. And whereas Gary began his career on January 4th, 1971, with WDEB, where he faithfully worked for the next 47 years. And whereas Gary and the rooster joined forces in the mid-1980s and they became the morning duo that became more dependable than any alarm clock. Gary kept the community aware of severe weather. On several occasions, he stayed the night at the station to ensure he could broadcast road and weather conditions the next day. And whereas Gary broadcast numerous games for the T double S double A, girls and boys state basketball tournaments in Murfreesboro, which included one of the greatest events in high school basketball, the 1984 state championship. Both York and Clark Range won the state championship in their division. And whereas Gary kept weather records for 40 years, and many students have utilized his records for school science projects. And whereas Gary covered many community news events, election results, the county commission, city council, and board of education meetings. And whereas Gary served as a volunteer fireman for 17 years, from 1975 to 1992. And whereas Gary was elected to the alert city council November of 1994 and served on the city council through November of 2002. And whereas, it is the privilege of all the residents of Fintress County to honor and remember Gary Edward Crockett, the voice of home, and extend to his family our deep appreciation for his distinguished and dedicated service to God and to our community. Now, therefore, Jane Michael Cross, by virtue of the authority vested in Mead as Fintress County Executive and on behalf of the Fintress County Commission, hereby memorialize Gary Crockett this 21st day of May, 2018.
Again, we thank the family of Gary for being here. It was a very touching presentation. Next on the agenda is presentation of EMS Week proclamation to proclaim the week of May the 20th to the May the 26th as Emergency Medical Services Week. And we got Micah back there. Micah, you want to come up a second?
I'll read this one, thank you. Through the little motion. This is EMS Week, this week, and we appreciate the annual service, all they do, they put the line off, lock on the line every day, they help save lives, and we appreciate the dedication, the training, professionalism, everything in this county. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of approval of a resolution 2018-12 authorizing the submission of the Congratuit grant for the 2018 application year. Have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Could you explain exactly what that is for somebody?
Who's got that?
Well, in a nutshell, I just, it's a grant that the senior citizens will apply for to actually get some food to come in to make baskets and such to distribute through the senior center. It's a 100% grant without putting any money in from the county, so it sounded like it could be really good, yeah.
$2,000 value and no cost to the county. Any other questions? Roll call vote?
Four.
Four.
JP.
Four.
Cam.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Eight four two absent, motion passes. Next, consideration of approval of a resolution 2018-13 authorizing the submission of a VEC grant for the 2018 application year.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion?
It's also going to the senior citizen.
Also goes to the senior citizen, Senator. Roll call vote?
Four.
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 Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of appointment of Russell Tompkins to the Fintress County E911 Board to fill the vacant seat and the term of Larry Cooper. This term will end in October of 2021. I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four. Justin.
Four.
JP.
Four.
Cam.
Four.
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 Larry.
Four.
Eight four, motion passes. Next on the agenda is a delinquent tax sale report, update and approval, and we'll have Ms. Gina Mullenex, our circuit court clerk, and our county attorney, Leslie Ledbetter, to explain that. And before they do, I'd like to say that on April the 26th, 2018, Fintress County held its third sale of properties which had liens on them for delinquent taxes, and that this sale included over 20 properties and several mineral rods. When this commission took office, there was a commitment of cleaning up the delinquent tax rolls which hadn't had any tax sales in over five years, and some of the parcels were left with tax owed for many were from 12 to 14 years. Some of these had been on the rolls so long that they were uncollectible by statute. So, we were losing tax revenue at that time when every penny counted, not to mention the unfairness to all our taxpayers who were diligent in paying their taxes every year. So, we held our first delinquent tax sale in July of 2016, and we cleaned up over 60 parcels, including many that the owners had passed away or that had left the areas, the properties were dilapidated, and in bad shape. Those now have been revamped, remodeled, look fantastic, and are back on the tax rolls. Toby Deaton, local attorney, had a sale for the county in 2017, that cleaned up many of the much older dated delinquencies, and then we had another sale in 2018. We have brought approximately $2,833,400 of taxable property back on the tax rolls for Fintress County, which equals tens of thousands of dollars of revenue a year. So, I want to applaud our county attorney and our circuit court clerk and everybody that was involved with this. It's made a tremendous difference for the county in raising revenue and, you know, in a county that's poor where every tax dollar counts. And, you know, I'd like to say commend this commission, they've been great stewards of the tax monies, of being very, very careful about how it's spent, so this has helped us tremendously. So, Leslie, Gina?
Thank you, Mr. Cross. You left out one important person in that tax sale, and that has been Mr. Jeff Green, who has given his time without any charge to Fintress County to conduct these auctions and did so in such a professional manner each time that I've been involved, and I'm certain, and Mr. Deaton praised him as well for that, that it was a smooth sale each time, and that Jeff, we really do appreciate all that you do in giving your time for that. Now, we're here to ask you to approve the sale, I think we did this last time, the 2018 sale that took place on April 26th, 2018. Ms. Mullenex has brought me the sale report. It has been recorded, it has been approved by the Circuit Court Judge John McAfee, and we are here tonight to present that to you. There were 22 parcels, I believe, and they were several mineral rods that were either conveyed to purchasers or there were no bids. I think Fintress County did get a total of five of the actual real property parcels where there was no bid, that will be, if you all accept them, will be deeded to Fintress County, and you all can do so tonight if you agree to accept those no bid properties at the end of the one-year right of redemption. Those properties would then just go by deed to Fintress County, and you all can have another sale and sell them for a dollar at that point, but up until that one-year right of redemption, nobody gets a deed. But here we are, here is the sale report, I think I've been over that with you all a couple times, and I just want to be sure that you understand it, and if you have any questions, please let me know. Ms. Mullenex has been so kind to do all these totals here for us, and I want to just touch a little bit on that. Her office handles the money, the collection of the money, they don't have anything to do with authorizing the sale or anything, but there are lots and lots of people who have delinquent taxes that come into her office on a daily basis, and it is a big part of what they do over there, so really do appreciate that. But if you all will indulge me, I need to give you a little bit of an updated piece of information, and maybe so that the citizens will understand what it is that you as a commission, what your role in this tax sale is, what my role is, what Ms. Mullenex's role, and what their role as taxpayers are. In July of 16, as Mr. Cross alluded to, and again in April of 18, I held the two delinquent tax sales for the 2013 and 2014 tax years, which gave people essentially three years and four years, extra years, to pay on their old tax accounts, and I do so at your direction. I don't dream up to go and have these tax sales. You all, if you recall, each time have given me an order to sell these properties, and you set a tax sale date. It's been said by some of the members of the misinformed public that Ms. Mullenex and I have essentially conspired to have these sales, but let's be realistic, it is the duty of the commission to order that suit be filed, and you do that each April, when Wanda Tompkins brings you the delinquent taxes for the past two years, she holds them in her office, and you all then order the property be sold if the taxes are not paid. Now, Ms. Mullenex is the office where the suit is required to be filed in Fintress County, and she's the office that collects the money, she turns it over to the general fund. She's the accounting department for these tax sales. Once you all have directed me as your attorney to file suit, and I do, then the suit is under the jurisdiction of Circuit Court Judge John McAfee. Now, if you know Judge McAfee, or even if you don't, you may have heard, he don't take no abuse of the system. He's very matter-of-fact, he was a former judge advocate general attorney, and he's very much stern and by the book. So, by implying that there's anything improper about any of these sales, you imply Judge McAfee would allow any kind of wronging action in his court. And this sale is done for court order, after you all order it to be sold, we take it in front of Judge McAfee, and he gives us an order to actually, to do the sale, and under what terms, under the state law. Essentially, the court's kept aware of all the actions, we don't waver from that period. As for notice, every taxpayer receives a certified copy of the lawsuit along with their particular property description and the original amount sent by certified mail to the address that the property assessor has on file to send their tax notice. Now, it's important to understand, the address on file is the only one that the law requires us to send a copy to. You as a taxpayer have to understand that it is your responsibility to notify the government about any changes in your address for every parcel that you own. Just because you don't change your address properly does not excuse your tax liability. In fact, the law doesn't require Wanda Tompkins to send you out a tax notice or a tax bill whatsoever, that is a courtesy. If you own property, or if you buy property, or if you inherit property, then you owe taxes. Which leads me to the notice issue. Even if you don't get a copy of your lawsuit, or a title opinion that I do on each property in the mail, it doesn't matter. The law says that a reasonable search for a person and those interested is all that's required. Now, I know that Ms. Mullenex gets a lot of complaints in her office of, oh, I didn't know. know," or, "Oh, I wish you called and told me." No. Here's the deal. You own property. It is your responsibility to tell us as Fentress County where you want your mail sent to. I can't help you otherwise. People who've come in and said, "We didn't get a notice," and we explain to them that service in the local paper for four weeks, which is the Fentress Courier in this case, is good and proper service under Tennessee law. We take to the judge a list of people who've not either picked up their mail or their mail has come back to us, and say, "Judge, allow us to publish this in paper." Now, you all have seen, I'm sure, this in the Courier for five weeks, because I insist on going one extra week to give people an extra time to figure out they owe taxes, come and pay them, or if you are a potential buyer, to essentially know what's for sale that week. We don't have to do five weeks. We only have to do four. But we have also included it in the community bulletin board on W D E B, and we've made up every effort known to man to find people who have delinquent taxes and to find people who might have an interest in these taxes. Sometimes there are banks and random mortgagers who don't necessarily come forward. If we don't have a good address for you, I can't strap it to a camel's back and ride it to your house or to your establishment, and I don't have to. I put it in the paper. It's huge. It's a two-page spread. Essentially, we also send you a sale report once it's over. We send a copy of what I were about to ask you all to approve to every taxpayer who had a delinquent tax amount. They have an opportunity, one year from the date that the judge signs this order, which is a few days after each sale, to come forward and pay that again and get your property back in your name. We don't want to sell your property. I don't want your property. Ms. Mullenex doesn't want your property. I don't think this commission wants Fentress County to own your property. We want it back on the tax rolls. There were some properties that were for more than bid amounts, and there are some excess funds that sit in Ms. Mullenex's office, in the accounting office essentially. If you want to come forward, once you know that your property's been sold and receive those excess funds, that's up to you. Again, the law doesn't require me to seek you, search you out, hire a private investigator, and come and give you your money back. But I just want everybody to be clear, we don't keep your money. Fentress County doesn't keep your money. Ms. Mullenex doesn't keep your money. Excess funds, nobody keeps that. We just keep the tax amount and the penalties, fees, and interest. And we also report a copy of this order in the register of deeds office, or at least I have done so each time I've had a sale. It's public notice for the world. You all as a commission have followed the law. I follow the law. Judge McAfee's followed the law, and I'm really hopeful that the citizens don't believe anybody who tells them any differently. We also use the State of Tennessee Administrative Office of the Courts. They publish this manual, and I've worn mine out, and I've seen Ms. Mullenex's, and hers is pretty worn too, that tells us in any kind of situation, whether it be mineral rights or personal property or a notice issue, what to do next. We've also consulted C T A S, and so I just want everybody to know that we have absolutely done everything we know to do to make these sales proper. Bottom line, these sales are required. They keep your taxes lower. They keep everyone paying taxes, or then you lose your property if you don't pay your taxes, and someone else gets it, and we put it back on the tax rolls. So if anyone tells a citizen that they will see to it there are no more delinquent tax sales, that is the commission. That is your role. That is not the role of me or any elected official, other than the ten of you on a vote. So I just want to be sure that everyone understands the law's clear, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate you all indulging me with a little bit of that information, just so that we can get it on the record and make sure that people know what we're doing. These are new things. It's been since two thousand nine since there had been a sale here in Fentress County, so there are a lot of back taxes. It's taken us a lot of time to clean them up, but we have put a lot of money onto the rolls. And I'll give you this report, and I'll hush. Yes, and Ms. Mullenex's office allows you to make payments up until the time of the sale, just so everybody's clear, we're not demanding one lump sum of these taxpayers at any one time.
Any questions?
I just want to thank you both for what you've done. I think a lot of work's went into it, and I think it's helped. It's actually helped tax collections. Seems like in the years since we started the sales, it seems, according to Wanda, we're doing even better.
I'll jump in here real quick and speak to that. The first year when you all began as administration, I think our collections, we were a hundred and four thousand dollars in the negative of collections that first year. Now, we've had three sales. We were only seventy-two thousand dollars in the negative collections in the ones she presented to you all in April. So that's a good chunk of money that you all had to use, tax money, much sooner than you would if our collection records had stayed what they were.
No other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Eight-four-two. Motion passes. Next is clarification of a Fentress County Sheriff's policy in conjunction with the county travel policy. Marsha, you got an update on that, or?
You've skipped one for first.
Look at fifteen.
We're fifteen. Okay, that's a good one. Number fifteen, consideration of the contract agreement for an eighty percent reduction in hospital services for Fentress County inmates between Jamestown Regional Medical Center and Verisigns and Fentress County Government. Prior to this administration, we had a discount rate from the Jamestown Regional Medical Center of a twenty-five percent reduction in cost for treating our prisoners. This last year alone, we got almost up to four hundred thousand dollars in cost for medical treatment of the prisoners that we've got at the Justice Center. And this new agreement that we actually signed about five o'clock this afternoon is going to give us an eighty percent reduction in cost to the county for treatment of our prisoners. And that's going to be an equivalent of probably two hundred-plus thousand dollars a year in savings to this county in treating our prisoners. Folks, this is a very, very significant reduction, and we're absolutely tickled to death. We're very thankful to Lynette Pritchett and all the people at Jamestown Regional Medical Center for working with us. We have been in negotiations for some time, and, you know, I thank Micah Dunford, our ambulance director, and Leslie Ledbetter, county attorney, Michael Reagan, county sheriff, all those who were active in helping us go to them, sit down, and make that deal with them. So tonight, we're asking you to approve a new contract with Jamestown Regional Medical Center on giving Fentress County Government an eighty percent reduction in our cost to treating our prisoners.
I move we approve it.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Jeff? I would just like to add that it's virtually impossible to accurately budget what our medical expenses are at the jail, because we just don't know who's going to come in needing medical attention and for what, you know, may occur while they're there. And I want to commend the hospital in working with us to help save the taxpayers of Fentress County this money.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Back to where we were. Clarification of Fentress County Sheriff's policy in conjunction with the county travel policy. Leslie?
I'll be very brief this time, Mr. Cross.
Thank you.
You all had asked me to look at our policy and procedures in conjunction with the travel policy that was passed at the last meeting as far as the personal use of county vehicles, and as I think we all know that there are different types of situations that come up in different offices and in different departments throughout the county, and the Sheriff's Department has a policy and procedure in place regarding use and repair and maintenance of department vehicles and procedures for use of those equipment. So basically, I just did a review of our travel policy in conjunction with the Sheriff's policy and conferred with a couple of people at C T A S, had a couple of their attorneys look at it. Also, I think the auditor had taken a look and basically said, "We need to clarify the fact that this policy and procedure of the Sheriff's Office," of which he can have a completely different one or disregard the county altogether. I think we know that under the Tennessee Constitution that he has the right to do that, but that this is not, it doesn't have the effect of changing our policy or his policy. It just goes along in conjunction with it. It's sort of a congruent policy with it, and I just want everybody to go on the record acknowledging that, so that if there are any questions, if it comes up with audit in the future, is, you know, the Sheriff's Office, they have cars, they have to drive them home there on call all the time. Essentially, it explains here, there is no personal use, but coming and going from your employment is not considered a personal use under, I think, most all of Tennessee policy and procedures for Sheriff's Department. Let me say this, we didn't create this will. This came from the state, essentially, is sort of what they recommend, and T C I, Tennessee Correctional Institute, recommends. So this is not something that we dreamed up, just so you'll know, it's always been on the record since April of two thousand seventeen, so.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Benny.
Four.
Donal.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next, consideration to allow Fentress County ambulance service to declare a nineteen ninety-four Jeep into surplus and that to be auctioned off on gov deals. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Eight-four-two.
Motion passes. Next, consideration to allow the Fentress County.
It's a little late to put it in the form of a motion, but could we ask Micah to just run a little notice in the local paper when this is going to take place?
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Micah says yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Consideration to allow the Fentress County Sheriff's Department to declare two vehicles as surplus to be auctioned on gov deals, and got the VIN numbers here. One of them is a nineteen ninety-nine Ford Mustang, and the other's a nineteen ninety-one Chevrolet C fifteen.
These were taken in drug seizures, and will go to the drug fund.
Exactly.
I move to approve the sale, but also ask that they-
Advertise those.
-run a notice in the local paper when and where to log on and how to bid.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the same deal as with the ambulance service to advertise locally as well.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
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 Benny.
Four.
Danny.
Four. Donal.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is consideration of adding a section of Spruce Creek Drive to the county road list. Jeff, you're on the planning commission. I think this recommendation came from them. Would you like to explain this one?
I will. The developer, Robert Livingston, has asked that a section of Spruce Creek Drive be added. It has been inspected by Scott Norris, and Scott made the recommendation to the planning commission that it be added, and the planning commission is passing that recommendation on to the county commission. And with that, I move to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Four.
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 Danny.
Four.
Donal.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Eight-four-two. Eight-four-two absent. Motion passes. Next is a discussion of the Fentress County wage scale. Jeff, I think you-
Yeah, I asked for this to be put on the agenda tonight. I think the wage scale as we, as it exists now, or the recommended wage scale as it exists now, has served a good purpose. I think it's time that the commission move on to something different, and we've been talking about this for two or three years now, and with that, I move to abolish the current wage scale.
Do I have a second?
Could I possibly make an amendment to that or suggest it?
Absolutely.
Um.
After a second. I'll second Jeff's motion.
Okay, we got a second to Jeff's motion, and now we have an amendment.
I agree. I think we've got to revisit this and rethink how the county has approached salaries. That being said, the wage scale, if y'all aren't familiar what it does, it has a base, like, beginning salary, then it tells you what you make at one year, two year, all the way up through twenty years, and then we actually stop at twenty years. So that's what we're saying when we're discussing that, so everybody knows. I like the fact of having maybe the starting salary, at least to have as a reference or a base, like, if someone hires an employee, at least they would have a starting reference point. So if we do look at getting rid of the pay scale, perhaps retaining that portion, the actual starting salary, and then go from there. The way that the salaries have worked in the past is if you had someone that came in with experience in that same position, you could reference that five years' experience on the pay scale, and this would be where you would start them. So again, just for, so everybody kind of knows what we're talking about. But if we did the starting salary, and then they had someone that came in with experience, then they could present in their budget, budget a realistic salary. And we, you know, we're in control. We do get to say what goes with that. So that being said, perhaps if we would consider retaining maybe the starting salary.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, I have a motion to abolish this-
We need to pass the amendment first.
Well, I'll get to that. We've got the motion to abolish the pay scale, and then we, with a second, and then we have a motion to amend that to retain the starting positions that are on the pay scale presently. And we have a second to that one. Any discussion?
One thing I might add to what Kim said was, just people know that the elected officials we have, we are totally mandated by the state of what we pay those people.
Okay, duly noted. Any other discussion? We will proceed to vote on the amendment. Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
J.K.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Ford.
Jim.
Ford.
Larry.
Four.
Okay, amendment passes, eight to nothing. We'll go on to the amended motion as presented by Jeff with that amendment attached. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Box.
Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
J.K.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Yes.
Jim.
Ford.
Larry.
Four.
Seven-four, one against, two absent.
Seven-four, one against, two absent, motion passes. Did we have something to come after that, or?
Well, I guess we can just make a little discussion of some things that we're working on. In our budgeting process this year, we are going to ask that each budget that's presented to us, in the past, has been presented as, we have the salary for the elected official, and then we have a total, grand total, for everybody that works in that office. So this year, in the process of doing budgets, we're going to ask that each either director or elected official break that into individualized salary, so we know what each person's salary is. And along with that, too, we're going to ask that we get a job description. We want to know what that person, what task, what job they're doing for your office. This is real life scenario, it's a workload analysis, we just want to know what the county is paying for when somebody's providing a service, we want to know, and we want to be able to tell you exactly what's being done. So again, it's just changing with the times, we're trying to make some improvements to make things a little easier to keep up with and to follow along with. So with the budgets this year, again, we're going to ask that each individual employee's salary be listed along with their job duties, what are they performing. So just kind of give everybody an idea of what's going on.
Well, I might also add to that, that since we did hire an HR director for the county, and that's been something that we've needed for a long time, and our new HR director doing a great job, we have started working on revamping and rewriting our policies and procedures for the entire county, as well as doing job descriptions. So this is something that we'd already started some time back, we're in the process of completing that, and that will be another place where we'll be coming into the 19th, 20th, 21st, 22nd century over what we had had before. So this is, it's going to be a good improvement. Any other comments? Jeff, you started to say something?
You're good.
Okay, move it along, then. Next is consideration of approval of the E-911 budget for calendar year 2018, 2019.
That being said, this budget was not presented with those stipulations in place, because we just, this has just come to light, so I'm just wondering, should we, should we give this back and ask that they submit it back with those actual salaries, individualized? I don't think it'd be fair to do.
Return it back.
Do they have to submit theirs to the state?
I think they do. Larry, do you know what the deadline is?
The deadline?
June, June when? Is it the end of June? Probably the end of June. We probably got time for it.
Oh, we've got time.
We're only at the 31st.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, got a motion to reject and hold off till the next meeting? Do I have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
J.K.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Don.
Ford.
Larry.
Four.
Okay, that means that has failed, and will be sent back to 911 for those changes to be made. Next, we have some budget amendments. Larry, you going to do those, or Marcia, which one?
The first one is for the, first one is for the library. Every year, they have the summer reading program, which is funded entirely from donations from various local businesses and some grants. So far, as of the time I tied this one up, they have received $750 total from Potter's, Ottington, Thincley, Bank of Putnam County, and Union Bank. So this just needs to be taken from the revenue code and put into the expenditure line.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
J.K.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Ford.
Jim.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next, from the Fentress County Health Department.
Some of the health department employees have received raises, got attached to the amendment, or to the, yes, the budget amendment, the actual amendment from the state showing the increases, so this just needs to be put into the expenditure line.
And that was an amount of 1,800?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
No move.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
J.K.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Don.
Ford.
Jim.
Larry.
Four.
Okay, motion passes, and then I think we have four from the general purpose school fund.
The first one is, they've received new grant funds, so this is just take the money from the revenue and put it into the expenditure codes. And the last three are, they had a new bookkeeper at the time the budget was done last year, so what she did was basically take the previous year's budget and put it in this year's budget book. So she's going through on these last three amendments and just updating their, these three budgets to match the actual grant as it came through this fiscal year.
We pass all four of those as one?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
J.K.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Don.
Ford.
Jim.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Under any other business, last Wednesday, the 16th, I had an appointment with Mr. Gary Bowman from 3422 Stockton Road. Mr. Bowman, would you like to come up, please? At that time, he expressed some concern over some of the adjacent properties to him and his neighbors. After the visit with Mr. Bowman, we went and actually looked at the property, have seen with my own eyes, a teepee, a lean-to, a tarpaulin that was basically randomly tied from tree to tree, some tents where people are actually living, and there's some concerns about that to, for the community, and what it might mean for them, as well as future Fentress County. And as we have discussed in, with Mr. Bowman earlier and in work session, Fentress County presently does not have building codes or any of the codes like that that some of the larger counties do. There's been kind of a, I guess, a hesitation toward moving into regulations by most of the small rural counties in the state. So anyway, Mr. Bowman, I'm going to let you make a presentation to the commission, if you would.
Thank you. My name is Gary Bowman, I live at 3422 Stockton Road, Jamestown, in Fentress County, thinking commissioners and county executives. Not only just Stockton Road, but there's other areas in Fentress County that have some grave concerns with the perfect storm, as I'm going to call it. I don't know what we can do. We're still going to look into some other avenues and so forth like this, but what we'd like to request is that maybe the sheriff's department frequent that, this one particular location, a little bit more often, maybe. I don't mind making the request to Michael, just wanted to go on public record about it. Also, if there's not a great deal that we can do without, I don't really know, it's kind of puzzling and frustrating a little bit, but I guess I need to go for the-
It is a difficult situation, yes.
Do I need to go to Planning Commission to have them maybe entertain the idea of taking over that road? That way you've got water and electric down there.
Planning makes every third Friday at 12:00.
Is that, is that an application I can pick up? Or how do I process?
The process would be whomever owns the road, you know, and I don't know if that road is owned, you know, by the county now, or, yeah, I don't know if it's on the county, you know, road list.
It's on the county road.
I think it's on our road list. I did, after we talked, picked it up.
Okay, it is on the county road?
Sue, at the road supervisor's office, and she indicated that it was on the county road, and there's a little cut-off road from that, and a shorter, much shorter one, that's the county road, and she can tell you exactly when they were accepted as county roads, but those are-
Barbara's sitting back there for the, Barbara, are you familiar with the place that we're talking about?
No, what's the name of the road?
It's off Stockton Road, about the 33, 3400 block.
The map, Barb says that it is Stockton Bluff Lane, and I think Stockton Bluff Trail, maybe?
That's what I've seen.
I would have to look at the road list.
Yeah, I called up to this Sue, and she was able to tell me the dimensions and that sort of thing. I wouldn't.
So evidently, they are on the county road list.
Okay. So does that mean that the county does have to provide potable water service in front of each one of the lots and tracts?
Yes.
No, what that would mean is that when that road was built, it was built to the minimum acceptable road standards of Fentress County Highway Department. But it doesn't mean there's-
And was duly accepted by Fentress County Commission as a county road.
Okay. So how do we go about getting water in there? Is that a private entity?
Fentress County Utility District provide, and I have to be clear, because we've gone down this road once before, they are not affiliated with Fentress County municipal government. They are their own entity, they're essentially a corporation, a municipal corporation, that provides water to a lot of, not entire county, and I don't know who provides it in Stockton, but I would start with FCD and ask them, what are the requirements to get water into that area? I just don't know. They represent themselves, I think Doug Jones here in town is their attorney.
This is a private utility company, in other words, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, so them being a private utility company, it's up to the owners of the land to go in there and pay an assessment, or an adjustment, or something else like that to have potable water service and meter boxes and so forth like that, is that it? Or you can't speak for them, right?
That's my understanding, but you have to ask them exactly what's required.
All right, good enough then, all right.
That gentleman's name you need to speak to is Lynn Dell.
Lynn Dell? Very much, gentlemen?
And I do have his contact number, Gary, if you need it, for Lynn. I've got Lynn's contact number that I can get to you.
I just had a question. Mr. Bowman, you've been researching this for a little while, I think. Have you looked to see what other areas, or have there's, you know, people that have dealt with this prior to us, things that they have done? Have you had any luck seeing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Maybe if you come into the planning commission, just have maybe something like that, just to give them some ideas.
Actually, they have, Gainesville, Florida has been most recent, as of the 17th of last month, has invoked a minimal living in the tent for a timeline, and it has to be temporary with the 72 hours on that before they need to make an application for building per sanitary sewer, water, electric, submit a building plan.
We've been reluctant and cautious, you know, with building codes here, trying to, you know, not infringe on that. But I understand what you're saying, maybe we could look at some ways that we could approach it without-
I don't want the people to leave.
Yeah.
I don't want, that's not what, that's not what we're talking about. I just think that they can, we need to be able to do something to get them in a better living condition. I mean, I mean, some people like to live out in the woods. I know I do sometimes, too, but I don't want to make a weekly thing of it. But I certainly do appreciate your attention, Mr. Cross and-
Thank you, thank you for coming forward.
Maybe we can work through it, come up with some collective plan or something, maybe. I certainly don't want to harm these people. I mean, I don't want any harm to come to them, I don't want anything to happen to them. I want them to be able to build their dream home.
Well, we appreciate you bringing this concern to us, and we appreciate your neighbors and members of your community coming out and being active and making their voice heard.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Thank you. Folks, that's all we've got tonight. Ms. Leslie, you want to?
If this lady wants to speak, I have a memo that I prepared for the commission that I'll be glad to provide as soon as I can.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Make it brief, thank you.
My name is Emma Legg, and I am appearing for a fifth time, standing up for truth, for justice, and for the law. And I am asking this honorable board to also stand up for truth, for justice, and for the law. It was reported in the March 21st, Fentress Courier, that my appearance at county commissioners' meeting on March 19th was regarding illegal repairs. That was incorrect, since we have never had an actual repair made to Skyline Drive's drainage. The Courier report continued on regarding Executive Cross's statement that my fourth report was fiction after my commissioner, Benny Hughes, made a motion to recess during my speech. Cross seconded the motion, then Cross abruptly adjourned the meeting, thereby Hughes and Cross both disallowed my right to be heard. Therefore, they both violated my First Amendment right of freedom of speech. Tonight, I am here asking this board to reconsider that March 19th denial for me to be heard, and I implore you to acknowledge that you do not have powers to deny me free speech. And I request that you respect my First Amendment right and allow me to continue reporting until I have conveyed all information regarding these illegal acts to this board. For I shall not rest until justice is served to all Skyline Drive homeowners. But this Courier's report stating that I had a longstanding grievance is most certainly true, although my grievance, in fact, encompasses many several grievances, all of which violate our laws and/or civil rights. But in 2016, Commissioners and Cross decided secretly behind closed doors to condone all illegal acts, despite their duty to ascertain the truth and to take action. Thereby, they rejected our laws and civil rights. My 12 grievances are, number one, Scott Norris refused a 2016 petition of all our homeowners to remove four obstructions made after Norris took office, so to keep his diversion of water from the first waterway to drain over top our road through the leg driveway in the second waterway. And this Norris is, Norris is derelict in his duties and has misused his office as road supervisor, plus his diversion violates the Tennessee Book of Law. Number two, the developers' wrongful diversion of water from the first waterway to drain through the second waterway violates the Tennessee Book of Law and our civil rights. Number three, Butch Blevins built his tar and chip levee mainly to cover up this developer's illegal construction, crossing over three waterways supplying zero culverts, and thus acts by both men violated our laws and civil rights. Number four, the developers' only ditch being inadequate overflows with water from the first waterway and drains through the leg lawn in the second waterway, which amounts to the illegal taking of leg property in violation of our Fifth Amendment. Number five, Skyline Drive being inadequately drained never qualified to be a county road. Thus, our third previous road supervisor, deceived commissioners, was derelict in his duties and abused his office of road supervisor. Number six, Blevins's 950-foot-long levee blockages resulted in seven drainage alterations, which equal a total of seven counts in violation of Tennessee law. Number seven, Blevins's levee wasted enough tar and chip to have tarred and chipped our cul-de-sac twice over. Thus, Blevins's squandering betrayed the public trust. Number eight, our cul-de-sac still has not been tarred and chipped, which is unfair and unequal treatment, and this violates our Fourteenth Amendment. Number nine, the developers and Blevins's acts are repeated in the second natural waterway, that is, zero culverts and only one ditch. Plus, Blevins's levee blocked water from draining through its own second natural waterway, thereby both men violated Tennessee law. Number 10, the developers and Blevins's acts are repeated for the third waterway, that is, zero culverts and zero ditches, plus Blevins's levee blockage diverted the second waterway through the third waterway, and again, both men violated Tennessee law. Number 11, the developers' diversion of the first waterway through the second waterway illegally increased the value- illegally increased the value of Roger Rich's property, 11 acres, but placed an unfair detriment on Skyline Drive homeowners' properties, which violates our Fourteenth Amendment. Number 12, all above illegal acts were covered up by three previous and one current road supervisor, and Commissioners and Cross for a fourth time unjustifiably refused to uphold county regulations requiring culverts, our Tennessee law, and our civil rights, and are derelict in your duties and have abused your offices that you hold. To have avoided violating our laws, Blevins should have installed culverts and dug a second ditch instead of wasting tax dollars as he did with his levee. In summation, since 2016, this Board of Commissioners and Cross have refused to investigate illegal acts my maiden by these two dishonest men. Also, Norris ignored a 2016 petition of all Skyline Drive homeowners and refused to move four obstructions because Norris intends obstructions to remain for his diversion of the first waterway through the second waterway via our road surface to drain through the leg driveway to cover up our inadequate drainage. But Tennessee law states Norris must remove obstructions. Thereby, Norris, Cross, and Commissioners are condoning lawlessness and are guilty of abuse of their office and are derelict in your sworn duty under law. To conclude, by not fulfilling your duties, justice has been denied to all Skyline Drive homeowners, and this makes these 12 elected officials co-conspirators by your own secret collusions, and also because they have known the truth after being given my three 2016 full reports with photos, and I was told Norris had been told the truth years ago by Ed Brady, our second previous road supervisor. Therefore, they are derelict in their duties because they each swore in their oath of office to uphold all our laws, and as a consequence thereof, they should resign. For concerned citizens, all my four reports, and this, my fifth report, including those photos, are available to anyone to read and view at State Representative John Mark Wendell's office at 240 Colonial Circle, Jamestown, located in the south end of Fentress County Health Department. Here are copies of my fifth full report for each Commissioner and Executive Cross. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Legg.
Jeff, 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 let me jump in there before you address anything. I need to, based on a review of this with additional C-TAS attorneys and-
I'm sorry, I can't hear you two over there. I'll be glad to come down front. A little bit more.
Mr. Cross, based on these allegations and legal claims and accusations that have been made at previous meetings and at this meeting, the regular March Commission meeting and in writing, I have to advise you, as my clients, Mr. Cross and the commission, to no longer respond to any allegations or legal claims against you all, both on and off the record, and certainly no response should be made on the record. Ms. Legg has alleged misconduct and violations of laws and statute, and what I would consider a potential impending lawsuit or litigation, and as such, I cannot allow you to respond on the record to that. Basically, an on-the-record response could repute any liability insurance coverage. At this point, you've been made aware of Ms. Legg's complaints, obviously, and she's made allegations of both criminal actions and potential pending legal actions against all of you. So I'm gonna ask you not to respond and to allow me to respond. Ms. Legg's allegations and legal claims were initially, and I think have always been, the basis in them has been a private developer's conduct, and that she, by her own admission, has known for the last 20 years, as records show that she purchased this property in 1998. Essentially, we need to have a basic civics lesson, and I think that goes far for many different types of issues that come up in government. What can you, as a commission, do and what can you not do? And I will essentially say this, you cannot get involved in private civil matters. It appears that Ms. Legg has a complaint against her developer. Primarily, she names her developer, and I have no idea who her original developer was, in almost every complaint, and like I said, since she purchased the property back in 1998. Since that time, we've had at least five different four-year-term commissions. They've come and gone, and the road supervisor conduct that she makes allegations on, primarily Mr. Blevins and maybe Mr. Brady, and I'm not sure what year that he was actually a road supervisor, that was before my time, those are either either over 13 years ago in 2005, or back in the time in which it was developed, back in, I think, prior to 1998, when she actually purchased her property. So we have no evidence that she sought any legal remedies. She didn't file a lawsuit against the developer back when her statute of limitations would have been active, and she did not seek any actions against the commission or the road supervisors in a court forum, which have been available, both our Chancery Courts here in Fentress County and our federal district courts. If she's making allegations of Fifth Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment issues, that those are available in District Court in Nashville, and I couldn't find any records that she had actually taken anyone to court over this, but that is always, like I said, a basic civic lessons, available to someone who thinks that there is an issue. Now, I will have to say this. This is my legal opinion. You all asked me to give this, and I did so back on April 5th of 2018, in reviewing all the information that was before you, in reviewing Ms. Legg's, all the information that she has gathered on her own and presented to you, and basically, I will say this, and I'm gonna stand behind these opinions based on what you all said have given me from Ms. Legg herself. Y'all's discretion is limited. When it comes to the road supervisor, it's much like we say, the sheriff is the sheriff is the sheriff. Now, the Tennessee Constitution does set aside a couple of different special offices, I'll say, the sheriff is one of them, and the road supervisor is another one that has a little bit more power by state law than just a regular elected official to act in their discretion. Even if that wasn't there, you all, as a commission, cannot by law direct the road supervisors to do anything. You can identify an issue when people come to you, and I'm sure, as Mr. Cross has alluded to numerous times, potholes and ditch lines and that sort of thing are issues in this county, and you can make recommendations to that road supervisor. However, you cannot tell him to go out and fix a road and expect him to act on your directive. He was an elected official and elected with his discretion under state law as to what roads need to be repaired, in what manner they need to be repaired, and when they need to be repaired. So I want to be clear, basic civics. Even if you also choose to tell the road commissioner to go out and do the things that Ms. Legg has asked, you all do not have the power to direct him to do so. You do make budget decisions for that office. You set aside money, obviously. Essentially, you don't set aside the money. The state sets aside the money, and you all just agree with that. They tell you what pennies go where at the state level, and you all pass a motion that, yep, this is what we're going to assign these pennies to. So essentially, if the road commissioner, in his professional opinion, finds that no repairs are warranted, or if he finds that certain repairs are warranted, that is within his discretion. Now, the Tennessee Constitution does not allow this commission, nor the executive, nor any other office, to tell the road commissioner what he should do against his professional opinion. Now, I know that some of you all have investigated this. You've been out to the side on numerous occasions, have taken pictures. You've met and investigated and collected data, and come back here and presented that also to the commission, and I don't think that any one of you have recommended any other action based on your own investigations and research. I don't think any of you found that there was anything on the part of the road supervisor who is in office today, because we cannot go back three or four commissions and tell a previous road supervisor what his job was or was not. We certainly do not have the jurisdiction to do that at all. Ms. Legg is certainly encouraged to take her findings to a private legal counsel. I have not received any documentation from an attorney on her behalf that she's presented these facts to them. Again, I will say, I think that based on the 1998 issues and issues that she has with Mr. Blevins in 2005, that those things are well outside of a statute of limitations of a taking issue and that sort of thing. But she is certainly encouraged to talk to private legal counsel on her own, if she's dissatisfied with my legal assessment and opinions, and if she's dissatisfied with the findings of both the opinions, the professional opinion, the road supervisor, this commission, and the executive. The law offers and has for the past 20 years, or at least based on her own admission the last 13 years, an opportunity to seek legal remedies in the form of a suit. That was then, 20 years ago, or 13 years ago, if you look at it, when Mr. Blevins was in office, the proper forum for the allegations that she brings up, such as a taking of her property, she could have gone to the Chancery Court or the U.S. Federal District Court. No such actions have been filed or instituted by Ms. Legg. And so at that point, she could have also filed a private suit against the developer who she comes here and tells you all that she has such issue with initially, and she could have sought an independent private legal counsel to do so. In this administration's time, since she has come here with her initial allegations and up until today, she has not brought any lawsuits, and I will advise you again on the record, given the types of allegations that she comes here and accusations against you as a commission, the executive, the road supervisor, that you cannot address these allegations any further, as they are legal claims, essentially threats of a lawsuit or a criminal action, and we do not comment on pending litigation, potential litigation, or other allegations of misconduct. We turn those over to the insurance company that you all have hired, Local Government Pool, and we allow them to address these. And like I said, again, if we're sued, if we make further comment, we risk losing Local Government Pool's representation, especially as these claims are at this point decades old. So I want to tell you, that's my official opinion, and ask if you would like me to present this officially, along with Ms. Legg's paperwork, over to Local Government Pool and have them go on record and on notice, this is an official allegation of suit against us, or legal claim against us, at least. And then they can also provide us with an additional legal opinion.
What are you recommending?
Yes, sir.
Did I make a motion to do so?
To have a motion to follow our attorney's advice of a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Jimmy?
Four.
Justin?
Four.
Jenny Penny?
Four.
Kim Fuller?
Four.
Dawn?
Four.
Kim?
Four.
Mary?
Four.
Motion carries.
So that being said, if you all approve that, if Ms. Hicks will gather me together an updated copy of all of Ms. Legg's paperwork, I will provide that to our assigned adjuster at Local Government Pool by the end of the week.
So from this point forward, we're not to have any further communication with Mrs. Legg?
Until Local Government Pool tells us differently, like I said, we cannot address allegations of pending litigation or accusations of any activity that is misconduct that has been alleged against this commission and as my client. If you do address those, whether in an official forum or outside of that forum, you risk losing representation by your insurance.
Any further comments?
And I will jump in there and say, this is the same insurance policy that covers the road supervisor, so this will be presented to them under both the commission and a road supervisor issue.
Thank you, Leslie. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I just want to say to you all that all this takes is three culverts and one ditch, only 300-foot long, that's all it takes. And my neighbors and I are offering to buy for two culverts, and then the county prepares the third. So simple, why not do that? If we're taking this any further, have you ever thought of just discussing this with Scott Norris, you know, as individuals? Maybe you can't do it as a county commissioner. Just have a meeting with him. All of you have a meeting with him, because Scott Norris has violated our laws. He has diverted the water himself on top of the road coming through my driveway, and this is our current motion. We need to have a discussion with Scott Norris, because he can take care of this. I was told that coal could be put in in three hours. So now maybe the third one in the cul-de-sac would be a little more time, of course, but why not try to do this for us and people? We have a street that, let me just say, that if I meet someone and they ask me where I am, and I say, Skyline Drive, and they will laugh and say, oh, you live on that street where the water is all over the top of the road. It's embarrassing. Plus, my property value has been destroyed ever since I can remember that we've been getting into this, because I did not know how this water problem was going to affect my property value. And I'm at an age now where I might need to sell my property at any time, and my value is gone. It is still gone, and all we need is, if you would just put the one culvert in at the first waterway, that would give me my property value back, and I could immediately finish my house the way I wanted to from the beginning. Just one culvert. Couldn't you talk to Scott Norris about that?
Again, Ms. Legg, I'm gonna have to jump in and say that Mr. Norris has given his professional opinion and in his discretion. If he says no, this commission cannot go outside his discretion.
I know that this commission cannot tell Scott Norris to do anything. I knew this, but you can't suggest it. And if you feel so strongly about this, and you should, I hope, do feel strongly about this, because this was a brand-new street, a brand-new development, with no culverts whatsoever on two roads, but if you feel strongly about it, you can take this to Fentress County Court and ask for a writ of manumask, demanding that he at least put in one culvert so that I can have my property value back and I can get my house to sell if I had to at my age. I just turned 75 years old, and I would like to know that my property value is there finally, and I could sell it. And I know you can't communicate with me, well, you haven't communicated with me. Only Kim ever asked me a question, and she asked me how often this happened, but it doesn't matter how often it happens, because this is a natural draw, and this draw should remain there by installing that first culvert in the first waterway, because that draw is going to have to be there for a 25-year rainfall, a 50-year rainfall, 100-year rainfall, and even 1,000-year rainfall. That draw should be there.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Penny made the motion.
Do I have a second?
We're beyond that already.
Okay. Adjourn.